To what you said, if if there is a reverence that is had for the indigenous people or community that inhabited that area, there shouldn't be a divide on changing the mascot. It should just be a no brainer. If you have reverence, then you understand how harmful it can possibly be, excuse me, possibly be. And one of the, you know, one of the the things that can be done, a couple of the things actually that can be done is, you know, does the school acknowledge the land that it's sitting on? Do you have a land acknowledgement? Have you done that? Is that something you've looked into? I mean, that that's a brilliant way to honor indigenous people and Mohican Nation who were in those lands. And, you know, teaching actual history, not, you know, five sentences on what Thanksgiving was, or, you know, what might have happened before that, but actually teaching truth honors the indigenous community.
Yeah, well, thank you for for offering that. And I can tell you that since this topic has come up, I think there's a lot of people in this community that have done a lot of research and we've learned a lot just by researching Native American tribes and their opinion on this issue. So thanks again for presenting.
Absolutely, thank you.
I had a question too, Heather. Thank, as Bart said, thank you for joining us tonight. And this is just my ignorance, like, so we we are on the land that that your ancestors were on? Is that correct?
Particularly Mohican Nation, but I will just point out, no matter where you're standing in the United States, you're on indigenous.
It's hard, it's hard for us to hear it, but so so I guess I was, I was wondering then, how did, are there any people here still that we could speak with?
Like in the area?
Yeah, in our area.
Um, I'm, I mean, I, I don't know that. I don't have a beacon that points me in the direction of where Mohicans are living. Um, but I mean, there, I mean, if you can speak to any indigenous person and they're going to tell you that, you know, it's just not appropriate. And we do have, you know, we do a lot of work out east, even though we're based in Wisconsin, we do do a lot of work out east because that's our homelands and that's what we're looking to preserve and protect. So, um, you know, we do have an office in Williamstown, Massachusetts, um, at Williams College. Um, and and I oversee that office that's there, but I mean, we are, you know, open for conversation when in there, whenever anybody wants to learn about who we are, or, you know, what we've accomplished, or, you know, anything like that, we're, we're, we're excited to talk about our history and, you know, who we were. So we're open to conversation anytime.
That's great, yeah, Williams College isn't far. So how did it? When did the people here leave and where did they go?
So our removal, we were in various different places. We were forced out of the Mahi Kanatech River Valley, which Hudson River Valley. Uh, we were forced out of there, um, pretty early on, right after colonization started. And then we were forced out of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, after we helped win the American Revolution. And then we were forced out of New Stockbridge. And then we were forced out of White River, Indiana, and then Kokona, Wisconsin, and then Stockbridge, Wisconsin. And that's how we ended up where we're at today. So we have quite the removal history. I could go into more detail, but then I would feel like I was, uh, giving you guys a lecture and I don't want to do that.
I get what I was getting at is how, how did, you know, how did folks that lived here not be here anymore? And and how did that happen?
So I think Yeah, it was all through forced removals, forced removals, land sessions. And then you had the Removal Act that was signed in eighteen thirty by Andrew Jackson, which a lot of people think only affected the southern tribes, but it affected the northern tribes as well.
Terrific, thank you for that information.
Thank you, Heather, for being willing to speak with all of us tonight.
Absolutely, my pleasure. And if there are any other questions that you think of later or weren't comfortable asking this evening, Tara has my contact information and I'm totally fine with you giving them.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thanks, guys, have a good night.
Anything else, Tara? Did you talk about? Are there ideas about next steps? Or are there other, are there other areas we need to cover? Or anything we don't, we haven't done that we should do or should do again? Anybody have any opinion on on that?
Yeah, we definitely want to continue the education and just finding information that community members are asking us to find. It was suggested that maybe we make a question and answer document so that community members, if they have a question, uh, they would be able to go on to our spot that we kind of have on our webpage and they would be able to find it. And any other questions that I, the couple that I answered tonight, as well as any of the other questions that we, um, we can find in the survey or as people speak, um, from now and, you know, going forward, we can add them to our Q and A and we can, um, kind of have all of the answers in one spot so that, you know, people aren't trying to go searching, but kind of make a document. And, um, made me think of the document we created, the frequently asked questions for our, uh, opening the school backup. You know, that type of a thing where we just have the questions that are coming in and then we answer it and we can add links so that people can follow to where, you know, there's whatever. But we do, again, I just want to reiterate that we, on our webpage, we have all the survey results for the public to view. We have the forum is back up there, um, for the public as well as any of the letters that we've received. They're all on there and then anything that we have gotten from the MCAI as well as the Stockbridge Muncie Tribe, we put, that is all on there as well so that the community can see, because we do, we just want to be as transparent as possible and just have everything available to everybody.
Sure.
I would just like to offer up this suggestion for the committee to think about, about possibly doing some focus groups with some stakeholders on both sides of the fence on this issue, um, to see with the motivation to see if there's any common ground between the two camps and and make that a starting point, to see if there's any common ground that we can agree on with this issue and make that a stepping stone moving forward to come to some solution, uh, that both sides could possibly live with that at the same time honors the Native American tribal community.
I know, um, on the survey, we asked everyone, um, if they would be willing to be part of a committee and, um, they're for or against is is part of that. So we can definitely look through it as a committee and see and pull from both. Um, I think that that's, you know, a great idea to, you know, hear and continue to work with both sides. Thank you, Bart.
Well, I know there is a mountain of information there and I'm still going through pages and pages of of that information. Obviously, this, this is important to the community and, but I also want to thank Tara. I want to thank the committee. This has been a pretty big job that most committees don't get assigned to, so to have public forums and surveys and all that. So it was, it's a ton of work and it's going to continue, I think, because we're, it sounds like we're still interested in in learning. I know I learned tonight just from Heather and I know some of the ideas that we we heard and where I read were, are there, are there representatives of a group that would advocate to keep the mascot? Uh, I don't know if that's something that we could find or certainly Bart's idea about the groups. And I did see a number of people that did say they would be interested in working on that to try to find some consensus. So that's, but I do want to thank, thank you, Tara. Uh, you did a great job, a professional, respective, respectful job on the on the virtual public meet and you folks have done terrific work gathering information to inform us as we come to, come to a decision. Okay. Randy, you gave us more to read.
Um, on the Culture of Love book that we're reading, uh, one chapter, that, uh, I forget which chapter it was, but the author, how when he became a, when he was a young administrator, he went into a school district where there was a group of large minority students that were, he felt not being challenged, pushed to a higher level. And he came in and started a summer school program for these students. He started a mentoring program and other support groups, assist these students throughout the year. Um, and it was a collaboration, collective effort by the whole school to challenge these students to to take courses that they normally wouldn't have thought about. And, uh, and then he had some resistance from the community, but in the end, it all worked out. The students were challenged, they performed exceedingly well with the support mechanisms that's put in place. So with that, and I, I think about what we do in our school, we do an amazing job of giving support. But some thought would be to maybe give the board or some information of how we're taking our students and challenging them. And what is the mechanism by which we challenge them to take courses out of their comfort zone? And, uh, it'd be nice to hear how we do that. And I know over the years we were parts of some of that process. But I'd be happy to maybe think a little bit more about hearing some more of that. I think we'd do a better understanding of how we function.
Would love to bring some teachers in and share firsthand what what we're doing in in that regard and how we continue to, um, remove the gates, so to speak, uh, to to access to to coursework. And there's been a lot of work done already and was, you know, still some work to do in that regard. But, um, but, you know, so definitely we'll we'll get on that. We actually had a conversation with our Lynx team today, a little bit, uh, close to this. We're just talking about the summer and how, what can we do to help kids this summer? That was kind of an open ended question, you know, um, you know, besides the traditional extra help, but what other ways, um, that we can help kids, you know, you know, this summer, whether it's everything from helping them learn how to change a tire? That was my idea, uh, just some little camps to more in-depth, um, learning experiences and things like that. So we can bring that for summer term back to life this year. So, uh, but no, we'll be more than happy to talk about that. That's why we're here. The governance corps, of course, is a little bit more nuts and boltsy, uh, than Lavelle's book there, The Culture of Love. But I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on on chapter two, this is again, a lot of nuts and bolts kind of thing there. If you had any takeaways from that. Talked about, you know, heavy things like systems thinking and strategic focus and all that kind of stuff, but. I'll just add, just, um, that I think everybody knows it here, you know, when, and again, this is hats off and it's, it's hat day here at CA, so the hats off to the board. Because in in reality, when you become a board member, you're, you, you just, um, in our case, you have seven or eight new spouses, you know, in in the scheme of things. And so how as a board do you, um, you know, have those sometimes difficult conversations in in a way and be able to listen and and converse and come to consensus on whatever that topic might be? And, you know, and this board, I think, does a great job of that, um, you know, through and through. And, um, you know, and I think part of that, that whole idea of deep learning is not only learning, this is essentially what Bart just mentioned, you know, learning about what's going on in the schools, but learning from each other as well. And how do we continue that, that, um, that process as a governance, um, group here? And again, I think you guys model that well, you know, from my years of experience working with boards in that regard, but that was just kind of one takeaway, um, was was that idea that, you know, continue to learn from each other and, um, and and if there's concerns or questions to to get it out there instead of letting things fester, you know? So it's almost like relationship one-on-one, I guess. We all sometimes forget, like, our spouses remind us of on occasion, uh, sometimes. So, um, but anyways, but I thought it was, it's, 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 this chapter is probably kind of like the the nuts and bolts of what a board does, you know, I, in the scheme of things here. The next chapter, by the way, is what the superintendent does, so. More than happy to hear feedback on that. We go for it. I appreciate your indulgence with those.
Okay, leadership team reports, your updates.
So, uh, the first is just on, uh, this week marks one year that CA and many schools across the state closed or or went into a different version of learning because of the pandemic. Several weeks ago, we had some teachers and staff come to us, we're going to do anything? We're going to have some type of, you know, nobody knew what to call it even, uh, just to kind of, so acknowledgement, you know, of of being at this for a year. So we thought it was a good idea. We asked for for ideas and assistance. Uh, this is hard because it it's affected, you know, everybody differently, uh, you know, in the last year. I know we've all either lost a family member or we know somebody who lost a family member or, you know, in in that regard, it's just, you know, it's horrible, uh, in in that regard. You know, but at the same time, we also wanted to just acknowledge that we're here for each other and and we want to honor our commitment to each other and to our students and our students to us. Uh, and so we kind of put together a daily events, if you will, and we put that out there and, uh, you know, and such like that. And it's been going pretty well. I think yesterday's sidewalk chalk was, you know, for everybody who went out there, I think there was a lot of pauses and, wow, you know, what the kids were writing on the sidewalk. Unfortunately, Mother Nature washed it away today, so they won't be there to see. But we did take pictures and video and we're going to put something together. I think Mrs. Miller is on that one, uh, in in that. So, um, so I think it's, you know, again, it's, uh, just to recognize, uh, we've all been through a lot. It's, it is hard on everybody. It is difficult, um, but but also recognize that there's, there have been successes, you know, and there has been, um, you know, some positives, believe it or not, out of all this. Um, and just to to say, yeah, we're, we're, we're doing okay. And again, I'll, I'll put us up to anybody. I really will, uh, of how we're doing here, uh, as a school district. And that is just hats off to the two hundred and twenty-nine people who are here every day, the adults, but also the kids, you know, and their families, because it's, it's tough on mom and dad or grandma who are home with their kids who are still remote, uh, you know, and and such. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's a lifetime event for all of us. Uh, and and hopefully it will not be as much of a lifetime event soon, uh, you know, in our country in in that regard. So, uh, so again, just, I just wanted to acknowledge and and say thank you to everybody for for just, you know, putting up with it, you know, and and being there for each other and being there for your families first and then the kids that we work with every day and your colleagues. It's just, um, yeah, it's, you know, I'm, I'm optimistic we're going to come out of here stronger out of this, you know, come out of the other end, so to speak, stronger as a school community. And I think our kids are going to, you know, be stronger because of it as well, um, in a lot of ways. And and for those who are still struggling, we're going to be there for them, you know? And and that's a constant, we've always had that conversation, but it's even more so. What are we going to do for people who are still struggling, you know, as we move forward? You know, I know that's a very important focus for the school board, rightly so, it should be. Uh, and we're going to continue to figure out, um, just to make sure everybody is is okay, you know, and is is doing okay. Uh, and we're there for them, so. Tomorrow's blue and white, by the way, as we finish off tomorrow.
Thank you, Randy, I, I do agree it's important and thank the staff to, it's amazing, it's been a year and, uh, all the things that have changed and that we do differently and some things that we will continue to do differently and other things may be changing a little bit as we proceed with the vaccinations. But I think as you state, it is important to acknowledge what's happened and and how it's impacted all of us and and help the kids understand what's happened too, because it is a lifetime. Always remember, remember this upheaval, like when you have your junior honors society have their induction six months late after, after they, if it weren't for this, all those things that impacted. And I appreciate, I know this is, you know, people, uh, paying attention to this with with the kids and decide, yeah, we would like to see what, what the kids wrote. That's good. Thanks to everybody for paying attention to that and the kids pay attention. It's been a lot of loss in a year.
And it, yeah, it's, it seems like we all, we, you know, tongue in cheek, it seems like five years ago, you know, a year ago. And in fact, like a picture popped up on my feed, I took a picture when we were here that weekend trying to figure it all out, the administrative team, we're in the district office. You know, you can't do that now, but you're on the district office, you know, pizza boxes everywhere. It's like the troll room, like, you know, like, I mean, so long ago, I missed appropriate hair. I mean, it was just, you know, uh, it's, it's, it just seemed like it was five or 10 years ago at that point, so I can pick on it. But, um,
We didn't know what we didn't know.
We didn't know, we didn't know.
Back then, I'm thinking, well, we'll do this for a couple of weeks and then it'll go back the way it was.
Yeah.
Hasn't happened.
So, but, um, but again, just thank you to everybody, leadership team for for trying to figure it all out and putting it in place. And the teachers for for constantly letting us know how we can make it better. Um, and, you know, and going forward, you know, for next year, I don't, we don't know what next year is going to look like, but we're going to make sure it's, it's better than it is today. That's all I can ask, can ask for, so. On the same kind of line, we, uh, we tried to find out how things are going with our, with our parents and our, and our students. So we did put out a survey to the remote only parents, so the kids who bend remote, not the ones who kind of bop in and out. It wasn't, you know, we didn't get a huge, you know, got decent feedback and I shared that with the board, I believe, uh, you know, in there. And, um, just kind of share a couple of things there, which of course I don't have opened up. Oh, there it is. So just a couple of the questions we asked, um, you know, what would, one of the questions we asked is what would trigger you to to have your kid come back permanently into our schools? And in the top answers, and there was, they could choose more than one, was forty-three percent of the respondents said when all staff are vaccinated, okay? And thankfully, we're almost there. I mean, you know, for those who want it, you know, they're, they're pretty, and and again, a shout out to Green County. Uh, I just want to say that real quick for for kind of getting us away from the game, you know, in in the region, in the state and in the country, you know, for that one. So again, shout out to to Penny and, um, Mr. Groden and everybody there and the Health Department for doing that for us. Uh, the the second, uh, one was when the CDC and DOH say schools are safe, thirty-eight percent said that was, would be a factor. I'm not going to comment on that one. Uh, and that's, I understand it, but just, you know, that we sometimes get conflicting reports from them. Uh, and then that nineteen percent said no mask breaks, less in-person days and and students are vaccinated, sixteen percent. You know, again, when that'll happen, I'm not sure, um, but, you know, we'll, we'll go forward there. So this is kind of interesting, um, on that. We did ask them also, is, if, is remote learning working for you? And if it was available next year? And again, I don't know if it will be available in the sense with the state, um, mandate it be offered or not? I don't know, because they haven't made that decision yet. But if it was offered in some form or fashion, would you, um, be interested in having your kids still stay remote? And forty-four percent said maybe, twenty-nine percent said yes, and twelve percent said no. So, um, you can take that both ways, because if you then look at the comments, I didn't, they're all positive, which I, no surprises there. Our, our remote teachers and our dynamic teachers have done a phenomenal job, uh, with that. And you can see those in the comments there, uh, whether it's our elementary, you know, remote teachers who, you know, are just, have remote each day. Uh, they're, they're knocking it out of the park, you know, they're just doing fantastic stuff. Uh, and it's a really interesting mix of our teachers, you know, veterans and newer ones. So it's, it's kind of cool that they stepped up on that. And the middle school, high school teachers are, um, if they're not falling asleep by six o'clock every night, then they're, uh, I don't know, uh, they're very in shape, I guess, because I would be exhausted every day because they're, you know, they're doing the live in-person thing, you know, simultaneously dynamic in most of their classes. So, um, and that, that's just tiring, hard work, et cetera, et cetera, on that. But you can see that the parents are appreciative of it and are, you know, happy with the results at this point, you know, at least the ones who responded, you know? It's almost like a catch-22, we might be too good doing the remote, we think, you know, we don't want them back there. But I think they all want to come back. I think our teachers certainly want to see them all back. And I think at the elementary, we're like eighty-six, eighty-seven percent of the kids in K fours are back in person, you know? And that, a little bit, a little bit more remote folks in the middle school, high school. Uh, it kind of puts us in a district about an eighty percent edge, so, um, eighty percent are in person, twenty percent are remote in the district, so. But don't know if anybody, any comments on that?
Yep. I've heard and also read that some of the high schoolers are just checking out the remote learners. What can we do to help them so they don't feel like they're checked out? And I don't know if it's necessarily from our staff point of view or if it's just the student themselves doesn't feel part of our community, you know, our school community.
Right.
So I don't know what we can do to help alleviate that.
So the, so the question is, is we have remote students who are not engaging? Yes. And that's the million dollar question that every school is asking themselves right now, you know? I just, I mean, you know, so it's not unique to CA, as, yeah. I know we're doing visits across the board. In fact, I was talking with, you know, I don't, we're talking about high school, but the elementary, Mrs. Miller, yesterday went to thirty-three houses yesterday and visited all of her remote students. So it's good, be as good as Mr. Nugent, knowing everybody lives in town, uh, with that. So, and I know Dr. Mercer has and the counselors have done home visits, you know, it's just one example of what they're doing to to try to get the kids engaged, uh, you know, and just constantly reaching out, uh, trying to leverage when we can the county, you know, as much as we can, but that's, they're, they're overwhelmed, you know, and as well, um, in that. So it's, it's, it's a constant struggle, it's a constant conversation of, um, you know, carrots and, you know, trying just to get them to engage, be there, do the work, um, you know, and show promise. Because, again, there's another piece here, you know, there's no reading exam, serious time, kids, you know, to to do your work and get credit and you're good to go to graduation. I mean, you know, let's put it as what it is, you know, this is, um, you know, uh, with that. So it's, uh, you know, and hats off to our counseling staff and to the administrators and teachers who are, um, becoming in in a good way, just, you know, badgering those, you know, and they say, trying to think of a better word, but, you know, just constantly on those kids. But it's, we're talking about it, the superintendents and the principals talking about it regionally, teachers are, you know, what can we do? You know, to help, besides getting them here, you know, that's always the, the, you know, and and I know Mrs. Castle's done a great job of getting a lot of the specialized students back who at first weren't here, you know, they were remote and just, just, you know, having those heart-to-heart conversations with the parents that they're, they're really better off being here in person, you know? For for most, you know, again, there's a few, there's some kids that are doing well, you know, and are thriving in some ways because they just, they, they're not in there, they're not here, which was triggering some other negative stuff, so. But for a lot of kids, they, you know, we know that they're here, you know, proximity helps when it comes to helping kids, you know, complete things and do stuff. So, um, it's, yeah, if somebody comes up with that example, you know, we'll all be, you know, copying it and that. Yep.
I can just be allowed?
Oh, I'm on, yep.
So, um, I, what's the rationale for the, if you, like, the random remote days that we're doing for everybody? Like, I mean, I'm not complaining about it, I just want to know, because I don't, I know that my son does better when he's at school. And we work, so it's hard, I mean, he's on and he's doing his work, but it just seems like he's done, like he has these, um, 84-minute periods, and they're like, classes are not that long, because it's a half a day. But I feel like, you know, for math particularly, because it's a double year for him, I just wondered why we decided to do that.
Well, early on, they were to practice being remote in the fall, you know, because we wanted to be ready, you know, in case we had to. Again, we didn't know, we didn't know, in August, you know, we were all anticipating, you know, I think if we all put a dollar down, we'd all say we'd have been closed by Columbus Day, you know, and if we were honest with ourselves. So, um, so that was what it was, I think it just kind of carried over. The two that we just had were on the, on the elementary parent conference, yeah, for the secondary, um, you know, we, we talked with the administrative and teacher leaders. Sometimes logistically, it was, to be honest with you, it was, let's just have another half remote day. We got some staff development in, in the afternoon, um, you know, in that regard. I don't think we're gonna have any more scheduled for the remainder of the year at this point, um, unless there's some, you know, maybe outside reason we need to do it, you know? There's like a testing day or something like that, so, uh, but yeah, it was mainly at the beginning, just to, so we'd have some practice, you know? Because for a lot of the, you know, that was, besides doing it in the spring, which was on the fly, we had set up a new system to test, test it out. And it was actually helpful, because I believe we kind of tweaked the secondary schedule a little bit after we did it once or twice. Pushed back on, so I don't anticipate anymore, um, this spring, unless there's something coming up in that regard, so, have to, like, the remote days. Sometimes, uh, I think it's, I hate to use the word easy, but when all your kids are remote as a teacher, you know, you know, you're, you know, I mean, that's, but I understand too.
Yeah, it's just, it's just like for us, it's really, oh my gosh.
Yes, yeah, I get it, it's almost, yeah, if we could bring the kids here, but still, I don't know how we do that, you know? Teachers could be remote, kids, teachers will be home and do a remote, kids will come to school, uh, I don't think the kids would like that, so. And then, uh, the last topic is, uh, community use of facilities, and I kind of, it's, um, it kind of goes with what Bart brought up with the, the innovation committee, and I said this is liaison, um, so I actually was kind of looking for some guidance here. We're, uh, I'm okay, and, and because we kind of did it in the fall, to allow groups to use our outside facilities, you know? As long as they go through the, you know, like, how we're gonna, you know, socially distance, if it's like soccer or something like that. I, I think I'm okay with like, just people showing up and using our track after school and our tennis, you know, because that's socially distanced anyway. Uh, the, the quandary I have is the inside use of facilities, uh, so I'm just kind of curious what the board may feel on that at this point, because, and I kind of look at it, kids and adults. Uh, you know, you have kid groups, like our scouts like to sometimes use our facilities, and, you know, there are kids, so to speak, CA kids. But then we also have adult groups who like to come in and use our gyms for basketball, for instance, or they may, we've had conversations about opening up our fitness room, you know, as well to the community, um, and have it supervised, um, in that. So I was kind of curious what your feelings are on that, and, and whatever we did inside, we would do it in a way that would not be any additional, um, work for our custodial group, let's put that out there, uh, right off the top. If it means more time for them, then I'm not gonna do it, but.
I, I think, if there's anything else, especially now, we have a structure in place to manage it, and we go through the Department of Health, make sure that we're following the guidelines that they've set up. And then you have probably a use form, you know, and an attendance and a contact sheet.
Yep.
And then who's gonna clean up the area when it's done, so there's certain things that go along with COVID protection from, that we'd want to pay attention to, I think. But, uh, the, the, I think, yeah, I would, I would agree to move in that direction.
Slowly.
It's a lot easier to do it outside, obviously, than, than here. Fortunately, it's March.
Is that like a district decision, or do we have to go to the county? Like sports, I was just wondering, because like spectators and stuff, that was like, kind of like curbed.
All over the place, yeah.
Yeah, but that's county, right, right?
Yeah. Well, okay, so, so like, so if we want to open it up, let's say have Little League use our fields, right? Um, there's guidance currently that we, we'd have to abide by, you know, like, um, it's only, well, or, well, that plus so many people at the event, I think is more so, I think for that, I don't think you even need parents. That's a league role, parents are leagues, like, the league made the parent, so, but as far as, like, let's say there's a Little League game on our, and I don't know the numbers, but let's say they say only 50 people can be there. I, I think it's just a total of 50 people, whether they're nine-year-olds or their parents, for, for that piece of it. And those are out there already, you know, because there's, yeah, I don't know how you do 50% capacity of a softball field, how you'd measure that, but, um, so I think there's just a number. Because I know that's what we're using for prom planning as well, you can have so many people. But we would run this all by the county, yes, before we sign on any dotted line to do this.
I agree, we should open up our outdoor facilities. Um, I'm still a little weary about the indoor work, so I will go for outdoor.
I, I was gonna say the same, kind of what Jamie just said, I think the outdoor is great, we should definitely move towards that. Um, people can spread out and kind of sit, you know, where they need to, and it's fresh air. But, um, the concern with the indoors is if we start allowing groups of, say, you know, 30 people in, you know, then this type of a meeting should then be able to have those same amount of people sitting. Yeah, I don't know, I just think about that.
I don't think we have any, besides the auditorium, there's no speak, just, that's a big number, just put it out there, so, yeah, I know, you're right.
I don't know what the Department of Health is saying right now, they, they're, you know, but whatever it would be, you know, we just want to make sure that that applies to, you know? I know there's a lot of us, and we make up a lot of that number as the Board of Ed, but.
If, if, if it pleases the board, I mean, our next meeting's April 15th, uh, hopefully it's really warm by then, but, um, it's after Easter break. If you, if I, if I could come back, or you'll have to see it ahead of time, but if I come back with, this is the, you know, what it's gonna look like, but at least I think outdoors, we could s- Do I have, feel a consensus for outdoors, okay?
I thought you were suggesting we have our meeting outdoor.
Oh, no. Maybe for the, for the 15th, I'll bring back an indoor vetted plan from the county DOH as well.
Are, are student body, like, clubs and things being allowed to meet in person right now? Like student council, and the students are here, are they meeting?
They can, yes, yeah, I know, I know some are still doing it virtually, um, but I know they can.
I wanted to make sure that we're, we're affording.
Yes.
Space and appropriate for our, our students before we worry about the community.
Agreed, yeah, but our, our student clubs are up and, and running, and, uh, again, some are doing it virtually, some are doing it, depending on the size of the group they're getting together, and, uh, like the cafeterias or stuff like that, so, then we, uh, we have a very, there's an app for that, so we use it for the clubs as well, um, where the kids sign up, it's called E-Hall Pass, um, we'll have to have Dr. Mercer demonstrate this, because I think it's pretty, pretty slick. And so it's, 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 it's awesome, if kids are there, you know, and they can cap it, so let's say we only want 20 people at this event, so if the 21st kid tries to sign up, they don't get to sign up. You know, and then at that, and then we can use it, God forbid if we need to contact trace, you know, that, it's all set up. So they use it mainly for, for using the bathrooms, so, uh, but it's been now expanded to be used for that, so it's a pretty cool tool. So, okay, so I will, um, put together the outdoor, uh, and then for the 15th, I'll bring back, um, an indoor.
I think we can slowly start phasing in our community members, you know, I think you guys usually have a good plan about things. And, you know, just slowly start incorporating it.
Okay. Good. Family first. Okay. Okay, yes, just give us two seconds to set up the tech, but yes. It might be easier to have them go first, then we'll have the principals go after.
Okay.
Yes, it's on.
I just see.
Yeah, you're, everything's on. Everything's on, so Mike is loud.
Yeah, that's mine.
Name's Bart. Ever seen it first? Hello, everybody. My name is JD Fielding, I'm a 13-year resident of the village of Kuxaki, and in our household, we have children who attend and participate in the athletics in the school. I've always supported the school's achievements, both academic and athletic, and I applaud this district on how it has handled the COVID-19 pandemic. Even my child's physician has said that Kuxaki Athens is the best that they've seen in several districts. And I do believe that we stand tall as a community and as a school district in the face of this adversity. Tonight, I am here to talk about, stand in support of keeping the Kuxaki Athens Indians branding as is, and as it has always been. To keep it honorable and to keep it as an opportunity to encourage further exploration, the rich indigenous history of the area and its relationship to surrounding counties and state. The idea is to educate, not eradicate. Never has anyone in this room seen this branding carried out in a disrespectful manner. Our community takes great pride in the Kuxaki Athens Indians name, and to suggest otherwise has been a great insult to both alumni and those who have emotionally, financially supported this community's athletic and academic, academic programs. Prior to moving to this community, I spent two decades on Navajo preservation, and am the blood parent of a native child and grandchild. And the planet of native people is very close to my heart. Having immersed myself in the language, the culture, the religious practices, and the general daily life of the people, living without water, without electricity, and living as the people. I still remain confident that the branding of this school is in no way appropriating a negative stereotype of any peoples. And it only stands as a badge of honor for those who work, study, play, and fight to defend it. During the virtual meeting, there was a lot of semantics about the branding of the type of Indian figure being used in the older publications and the brochures. That takes away from the overall discussion. But I do support not using a depiction that would characterize any specific tribe or stereotype of any tribe. However, I do fully support keeping the name and the branding that bears the current feathers image in lieu of the sometimes used headdress. That is, if something other than a name is necessary for the majority of those deciding this. We need to keep it democratic, and some compromise should be made for all concerned. The idea of a focus group is ama- is, is amazing. In conclusion, I remind the board and the watching alumni and the supporting members of this community that a great deal of time, energy, and financial resources goes into putting this type of branding into the renovations, recent remodels of the school, its grounds, athletic department. But I do thank you for your time, I thank you for hearing me out and allowing me to share my thoughts on this matter, and I hope that the board takes this into consideration. Because the future support necessary from this community will weigh heavily on that support and that decision. Thank you all very much.
Evening.
Uh, for those who don't know me, my name is Jay Caldwell, I'm an alumni, grew up here, I was an athlete at CA, as were my parents, grandparents, distant relatives. Now I'm also a, uh, resident, a parent of a student, a teacher, coach of multiple varsity sports, and I assist with the strength and conditioning of the other vars, varsity sports here at school. I consider myself very fortunate to be a member of the dedicated athletic staff here at CA. We're all very invested and committed to our athletic programs and to our students. Though I can't speak for all coaches, I can say that many of whom I've spoken with have expressed strong agreements with my stance on this topic of changing the mascot. I and many others in this community feel it's time to change the mascot. We need to be honest here, we don't really have a mascot anymore. We have a name, uh, years ago, we decided to stop putting imagery on our uniforms, uh, stop having somebody run to the gym dressed up like a Native American chief. And those were the right choices to make, but it's also a little sad, because we as a school, we don't have the full experience of having a mascot. We, we just have a name, and it's one that we have to be really careful about, and we don't really get to celebrate the way that we would like to. Because we know that it's inappropriate and, and that it's outdated. I spoke at the last meeting about why is the name change overdue? We all learn in grade school and work right here in this building, we teach students that India is a country on the other side of the globe. And that using the term Indian to describe the native people who lived here was a misnomer, it was a mistake. And our name is based on a historical mistake, and it was chosen in a time of where racism was pretty powerful. And, and that's the basis of where this current mascot name came from. We know that many national, regional organizations representing indigenous nations and people have spoke out and said that they would like the name to be changed. But I know as well as anybody that around here, we don't like outsiders, tell us what to do, so I reached out to, um, local representation. I contacted the Hercoy Museum that we were brought to as kids over at Howe Caverns, and I spoke with their historian, who's also a member of the local Anandagga tribe. She spoke with me for over an hour about why the use of the Indian name as a mascot is not only offensive, but inappropriate. And what, how that are people who feel that, who, who consider themselves indigenous people today, and she would be happy to come and speak with you if you'd like me to set that up. By changing this name, we can show our, that we do listen when people talk, that we do have respect for everyone, and that we are willing to change and grow to better ourselves and our community. And I think that's an important thing to demonstrate. On the plus side, the positive side, let's think about how exciting it would be to get to choose something new, to have a mascot again. To have somebody who can get dressed up and while out at halftime of games, to have something that we can cheer and chant, put images all over our school. I think that's something we can all look forward to, and I think we can find something that better represents us as a community. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Jackson, um, I'm a parent of a student here at CA, um, actually from the Athens community. Um, again, I wanted to, uh, state as board and to the leadership of the community, wow, being able to open the school five days a week, and yet also offer remote to other students who really needed that as well. That level of leadership wasn't a democratic process, wasn't something where you took a vote and said, okay, so we have this many this, this many this, and so we're only offering this many positions of remote and this many positions, because that's the vote. Um, in the same way, this mascot, um, decision is not a democratic process. If a student was feeling taunted, you wouldn't say to the one who was talking to them, now what is your opinion? And therefore, uh, we're gonna take a vote and see whether this is, which is more popular, this isn't a popular vote. This is a group saying, we are, what you're depicting is not right about us, we are offended by it. When we find out, and our children tell us, or we tell our children, if someone, you're doing something to another child and they say to stop, you stop. Now we have to do that too, we have to, we can't keep saying it and then not do it ourselves. So that's your only choice. The only thing that this board can do then is to decide on how long is it gonna take? I heard some great things that Tara was talking about in terms of the fiscal responsibility and how long it would take. I heard some great things that Tara was talking about in terms of the fiscal responsibility and how long it would take and how it wouldn't cost anything. Those are the things that people are worried about. The things that I've also heard people worry about about memories, which I don't understand. But my high school is closing at the end of the school year. My memories will still be intact. I will still remember the other students that I went to school with, the events, all the different activities we did. None of that goes away. So memories, I don't see how that has anything to do with your memories don't disappear. But your memories in twenty-five years, when our children come back for their twenty-fifth reunion and say, man, did they hold on to that image for way too long in that name? This is embarrassing. That is a memory we don't want to give them. We need to change this because the people who are affected said, stop. And when someone says, stop, you don't wait, you stop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. My name is John Cameron. I spoke at the virtual meeting on March third, voiced my opinion, and thought that was significant to get my point across. But I was contacted by someone very special. And they stated that Kuxaki Athens Indians is removed. The Favickio family will have the monument, Tommy Favickio, removed from the football field and placed elsewhere. This struck a chord in my heart because not only was Tommy a C A Indian athlete, he was one of my best friends. And if his family feels this strongly about this subject, I owe it to him and them to fight as hard as I can to save our Indians. I graduated in nineteen eighty-nine. I was active in the sports program from seventh grade until graduation. The Indian was always expressed to me as a stereotype of pride, courage, bravery, and tenacity. I was taught to bring these same principles onto the court and fields of competition. And I was to never act in a way to tarnish the Indian name I wore on my jersey. The Kuxaki Indian is in no way linked to any negative stereotypes. I asked the board in the virtual meeting if they were approached by an organization or one person. I was not given that answer. I have that answer now.
It's come to us in a variety of ways.
There was, I read one thing. It was brought to the athlete class. So I'm going to go with present. It was one person who brought this up. So if one, if this whole thing was started by one person, where does it end? If a person comes and said, I'm offended by the meat in the school's menu, is the board going to consider removing all meat from the menu because one person is offended? When does it end? The Indian has been the mascot of our school for decades. Without issue until recently, my mother worked in the high school principal's office for decades. And never once did she ever mention to me of any parent calling in because their child was in need of counseling because our Indian hurt their feelings. Honestly, does the Indian mascot bother you to the point of losing sleep or needing counseling? Is it so much of an issue in your life to be willing to change district traditions and cost the taxpayers thousands of dollars? Or is it just a social justice warrior issue that we, once decided upon, people will move on to the next issue? I hope those who oppose the Indian take the time to truly think about the reason they want to replace the mascot. It supposedly disrespects the indigenous people who once lived here. Well, let's think about that. If this is true and you truly believe this, shouldn't you then go home and consider forfeiting your properties back to these people? Since their lands were stolen from them, being stolen from them is far more disrespectful than our school district honoring an Indian with their name and likeness on a jersey. As mentioned earlier, Mr. Caldwell brought up a point that the term Indian was offensive because it was used, it was created in a mistake, okay? The discoverers people came here and thought they were Indian. So they want, his, one of his requests now in the, in the virtual meeting was that because it was a mistake, we shouldn't use it. Well, the fact that the discoverers found America by mistake, should we just give up America and move somewhere else and get back to the Indians? There's a couple of points that I want to make before I leave. In two thousand and four, when this whole issue was brought to light because of the Washington Redskins, there was a survey done by four indigenous people by the Annenberg Public Policy Center. They surveyed people, indigenous people, in the lower forty-eight states. The question asked was, the professional football team in Washington calls itself the Washington Redskins. As a Native American, do you find that name offensive or does it not bother, quote unquote? The result, the result showed ninety percent of those indigenous people stated that the use of the Redskins' name was acceptable. Nine percent of those people found it to be offensive, and one percent decided not to answer. The margin of sampling error is two percent. This was not of organizations. This was common people. As far as the survey that was done online by the district, I find it to be questionable due to the fact that you could answer these questions multiple times, answer your input multiple times. Kind of like people hiring marketing firms to get what they want to do to receive in public opinion. There was also a case in two thousand and one in New York, and I'm going to short its name, Salamanca Central High School Warriors in Salamanca, New York, where the reservation, where the Allegheny Indian Reservation, the Seneca Indians, joined with the school district in petitioning to keep the Warrior name. In closing, I believe that during these most uncertain times, this board has far more important issues to deal with than this one. I hope the interest in these board meetings remains at this level, and the same amount of community input is requested and given on all matters, not just this one. I believe I've made my opinion on this issue known, but just in case, I'm a hundred percent opposed to changing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'd just get you to sit down because it's very emotional for her. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here today. This is really important. I'm here to speak to the issue of changing the mascot. Let's start by looking at the core values listed on the school district's website, which are empathy, gratitude, and taking positive action. I'm here for all of that and want to hold the district accountable to their statement. I have empathy for the situation at hand. Change is hard, but also necessary for growth. I think we can all agree that no one can tell us how to feel and that this issue is very personal for many. My goal here is to share it with those who might not understand the lived experience of a person of color in your community. According to census records, Athens has an eighty-eight percent white population, so I urge the majority of the population to listen to someone outside of your experience. I'm half white, but I look brown enough for people to notice and ask me about it constantly. So I've been forced to think about cultural issues my entire life. I want to say that this is not easy for me to comment publicly here. Athens has not felt like a safe space to me as a person of color. Soon after moving to Athens, I had people drive by my house and need a white power, and my house was egged. I had been called Rachel Slurs while walking down the sidewalk. I moved here because of the good school district, and people had told me it was a safe community. I moved out of Athens because of the lack of safety I felt as a mixed-race person. Every person of color I've spoken to in the area knows this about Athens, Kuxaki, and it is an unfortunate reputation that I hope can shift with conversation and self-awareness. My background is in working with children and education, so this is really close to my heart. When I first sent my child to E J A, I was shocked by the mascot and felt like I was alone in wondering why it was still this way in this modern time, particularly in an educational setting where children are meant to feel safe, learn, and have respect. And this was the T-shirt I was given for my child on the last day of school. This is where my taxpayer dollars went. I've never let him wear it, and I never will. Been waiting years to have this conversation on a larger scale. I didn't bring it up when I lived in town because I didn't want to be one of the only people of color advocating for change. Because again, this is not a safe space for non-white folks, and God forbid I come off as an angry brown woman. I respectfully asked around about the context of the mascot, just wanting more information. And people told me it was because of the history of indigenous people in the area. But frankly, that's a weak argument because this entire nation is built on indigenous land, so I need a better reason. I took an archaeology course and studied paleo-Indian history in the local area. I read extensively about the culturally significant Sherquerry in Athens. So yes, I understand the pride around the history, but I don't see any indigenous community around. So why was this mascot here? It seems so out of place. For a majority white population to say, I'm an Indian, is problematic. You are using cultural appropriation and calling it pride. Does any revenue go towards supporting any reservations or indigenous communities or, you know, historical lessons that have been, that people have been displaced? Because if not, then you're benefiting from another culture. And I think this community is creative enough to come up with another more appropriate mascot. As a side note, owls are pretty incredible apex predators of the night and a symbol of wisdom. And have you seen their intimidating scowls? I don't give a fuck what you all change the mascot to, but what I do know is this change is long overdue. Being stuck in outdated ways is not something to be proud of, but reflecting and being self-aware enough to recognize when growth is needed is something to be proud of, and what an incredible, teachable moment for students. My last note is real change only happens when policies are put into place to support them. So I urge the school board to consider voting to change the mascot. One of the anchor strategies listed on the school district's website is growth mindset. Well, here's your moment to lead by example. Thank you for hearing me. Another thing I just found in the hallway was this with the mascot on it. But let's read this part, open your mind. That's what I all, I hope that we can all do here tonight. Thank you.
That it's everyone here. Okay. We also received emails and letters. And they're all going to be, have been or will be shared with all the board members. Email from Abby Martin regarding grade grouping. An email from Casey McCarthy regarding grade grouping. An email from Allison Phoenix regarding grade grouping. And a second email from Abby Martin regarding C A reconfiguration. And we received letters, well, emails actually. Today and yesterday. An email from Mark and Patricia Spat regarding keeping the mascot. An email from Mr. Ralph Vaca regarding not keeping the mascot. An email from James Ewing regarding keeping the mascot. An email from Michelle McElroy regarding not keeping the mascot. An email from Henry Weinart regarding keeping the mascot. I hope I read them all very quickly. I hope I got the opinions correct. So we'll look at those and then we'll either respond to the next meeting and on the agenda or prior. So if we go back to building highlights and department highlights. If Mrs. Miller is with us, could talk about Kuxaki Athens.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me?
Hello.
Good. All right. So, um, excuse me, you've probably read. Can everybody hear? So you've probably heard all the different highlights or them. The insert that you put in. One thing that wasn't in there is every year we have the New York State Agricultural Literacy Week, and this is in its seventeenth year that it's held. And this year, they're featuring the book Chuck's Ice Cream Wish, which it's called Tales of the Dairy Godmother by Viola Butler. And this book will take students on an explorative journey as they trace food from the plate that the students have to the source, which is the farmer, while also showcasing the diversity of the agricultural industry. So I'm pleased that our second grade is participating in this year's virtual event. We have many other virtual events that we've had this year and that we're continuing to have along with planning another author visit. And that our third grade is also having more presenters come into their program. Mrs. Viti has someone coming from the American School in Brasilia, and that will be taking place this week as well. So great online offerings that regardless of the pandemic, I hope that these are things that are going to continue, that we be able to have access to as well as moving into the twenty-one, twenty-two, having party in person events and bringing back all of our assemblies in that wonderful space that you're in right now. So hopefully we'll get to use that board and it will be operable. And things, things will be different, but also to continue with a lot of our virtual programming. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martino, are you available?
Yep. Okay. Am I coming in there? All right. Phew, got a little worried. So we are gearing up for the annual P T O run. And it was a unanimous decision made by the P T O to rename the fun run in honor of Margaret Schmidt to the Margaret Schmidt Memorial Five K. I think it's been a wonderful thing to do in her honor. The P T O has put together various protocols in place for the health and safety, and we're really looking forward to another successful P T O event. And the run will be on May. In addition, I want to thank our P T O for sponsoring and receiving a grant through the Athlete Community Foundation to purchase a shade structure for the playground. And it will also be dedicated to Margaret Schmidt's name sometime in June. And she was a big advocate for getting some sun shade structures out on that playground. So I'm really excited that that will be happening and just a couple of ways that we can honor somebody so special like Margaret.
Thank you, Mr. Martino. Mr. Popper is right across the room. Anything for the middle school? Okay, you can shout or?
I just like to clarify acknowledging the middle school through counseling and then should figure out our system for their effort. You know, it didn't, it might not know it, but they, we did practice that. Nicole and Pat talked and Nicole and her, there was no, you could be putting that together. I want to say, I make sure they have everything. But I've had the pleasure of the last month or so in a lot of classrooms. And I've seen a lot of great things. I've seen art things, discussions in the video's class. Talking about college and career readiness and, you know, this is how I get this class. Books and breakfast in Mrs. Collier's class, which is kind of, you could deliver breakfast for the rooms. And so people are adapting, you know, as we go along. But just one final thing I want to bring to attention is, if you have any chance to look at Miss Sump's kindness letters? I don't know if you have a chance. It's pretty, it's pretty cute.
Yeah, there was, there was, yeah, there was a link. Very nice. It reminds me, and Ms. Miller, the monster that was being sold too, that was, I wasn't sure how much that would cost to buy, but that was cute. Dr. Mercer. The high school.
All right, this is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Weird, I don't know if I'm talking, I can't see myself. So you guys got our good news for the month. I think we've had a few things. You know, more recent things. I'm going to say yesterday, I spent almost the entirety of that two-hour lunch block, which is very, very long, but not, you know, not, not just for the kids. With students out doing chalk on the sidewalks, chalking their messages, such, you know, messages of positivity, upbeat messages, just. And it was despite the fact that it was a little cold, it was just a great afternoon. Seeing kids be kids, you know, for a while. And the middle schoolers came out and we saw some elementary kids across the way. It was, it was a very nice afternoon and the kids really, uh, they had a lot of fun. I wish it hadn't rained. And then the other thing I know, Mr. Squire posted on Twitter, I posted on Twitter as well. I, the phys ed department, specifically Jackie Cashin and with assistance from Carl Henchy, our new aide and Coach Wilkinson's daughter, who helped set up some of the weird little things in the, on the gym floor. They set up a 15-hole miniature golf course. I went into the gym on Tuesday, on the remote day and saw just stuff all over the floor. And I was very scared that some kids had gone into the supply, into the storage and had, you know, were playing some sort of prank on them. And then, you know, Coach Cashin came out to explain what they were doing and it was brilliant. You know, a way to utilize our space to be able to, you know, be socially distanced and not have to worry. You know, it was not aerobic exercise, obviously, but it was a lot of fun. I went and played a few rounds and, and talked to the kids. They had no idea that it was going to be happening and it just, it, it was, it was so creative. And such a surprise for students, they're all having a blast in gym class this week. So, um, you know, 15 rounds of miniature golf is a lot, but kudos to them. They really, they did a great job and it's very creative and very, 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 very difficult. Because the obstacles are rubber chickens and stuffed pigs and little, you know, toys. And, and the kids have been very respectful. I mean, they have, they're not messing it up either. You know, you can kick a barrier and it, they've, they've left it exactly how it was built. It's, and it was really a lot of fun. So that's our good news for this week.
Thank you. Nicole, anything you wanted to say about tech services? Thank you. Katie, special ed?
I'm actually going to be pin-chinning for Katie. A little bit of tech issue. So Katie wanted to share that the elementary school completed 42 annual review meetings last week. And she wanted to say thank you specifically to the elementary special education teachers, Mrs. Dool, Mrs. Yost, Mrs. Novak, Ms. Davidson and Ms. Quiznow. The students are making great progress. And she wanted to say a special thank you to Tori Yost for organizing and chairing many of the meetings. In addition, the algebra core class with Mrs. Soldner and Mrs. Collins made a short rap video on one-step equations. That video is in your good news. One of the high school seniors wants to do a media broadcasting. And one way to practice his skills is to practice reading with voice pacing and enunciation. He visited Mrs. Hazelton's class to read a book about Abraham Lincoln. He is also reading books and uploading them to YouTube for elementary students and teachers to access. There's a picture of that in the, in the good news. And with gloves, masks and sanitized hands, Mrs. Novak's class makes Dr. Seuss soup.
Thank you, Karen. Okay, thanks, everybody. Obviously, in spite of everything, we are still persevering and doing terrific jobs at helping kids be successful. So thanks to everybody, all the staff and administrators. School services update. Leslie?
Hi, everyone. First thing, I have a question. We have our committee set up for the board. The one thing that's not clear is for the facilities committee. I know Nicole joined the committee, but we really don't have a chair that was sort of tabled. So we're going to need someone to take on the facilities committee to take that chair role. I don't know if. Okay. Thank you. Okay, um, Sleepy Hollow Lake legal fees. As you know, we have a five years now of a certiorari with the properties in Sleepy Hollow Lake. The, the case is being seen by a new judge because up till now, we haven't had a resolution. So it's being seen by a new judge. They're expecting that process to take probably all of next year. So there's one thing on the agenda, I'm asking the board to set aside money and more money in the tax certiorari reserve. And that would be for any 2020 taxes that we may owe back if it doesn't go our way. But the other piece of this is the legal fees. And I've spoken to you, to the board about that in recent months. And the towns of Athens and the towns of Kixaki are looking to partner up with us again to pay for those legal fees. They're estimating that the fees for this defense could be anywhere from $80,000 to $95,000. So I'm looking for some sort of general feeling on the board and partnering with the towns to continue that certiorari proceeding. So. Yes, yes. So maybe we can, you know, consider that. But I'm going to need something so I can get back to the towns to let them know what our commitment level might be.
What does that look like, Leslie? Do you need a?
Well, what we typically would do is an intermunicipal agreement. And then the last one, we, we provided, you know, what we would be, we would be willing to pay as part of that proceeding. So that would be the conversation. What, what's the board willing to go to? A third of it would be a range of $28,000 to $32,000 for the, the school district.
Today, we had a conversation with, with Rick Hance. You know, he was more of a guarantee in the lower end, which is good from our attorney. So again, it'd be another additional, like, I think we did the last time, we put a cap on it. You know, we made a resolution that we would be willing to partner with the two towns with this, no more than, in this case, would be $28,000 for the school district and legal fees. Yeah, just if you may indulge, just, so again, just kind of review here. This is a, a suit that was filed by the Association of Property Owners of Sleepy Hollow Lake. It started in July of 2016. And they've, are asking that all their common area parcels are assessed at $0. So this has been going on, they've each year continued that claim going forward. You know, currently, we have $321,000 set aside in our tax certiorari reserve in case we, we eventually lose. Because then we'd have to pay them back, back taxes. All right. We go ahead with the, what we would be, this year's taxes are up to $410,000 that we have. Being responsible and putting aside in case we do lose this case. You know, just as a sidebar, it's $410,000 that could go towards anything else in our schools, you know, besides this. We've won each step of the process, but as we know in New York, there's many layers of courts. I, we've, including the Court of Appeals, which is a five-member, it was 5-0 in our favor. But Sleepy Hollow Lake Association has continued to press forward. We mentioned now our, our legal fees are right now at $101,000. We've already spent in legal fees, again, the money that could be spent in our classrooms. If Sleepy Hollow Lake were to prevail, we would of course have to refund them the $410,000 out of our reserve. Would also mean a loss of assessed value of $4.2 million or about 0.5% on our total assessed value in the district. And so what happens then, let's say Sleepy Hollow does prevail and that money, that property is taken off the tax rolls. Everybody else, including the individual homeowners of Sleepy Hollow, have to pick up the difference. And so for a home in Athens, that's about $8.53 per thousand. And for a house in Kixaki, town of Kixaki, it's $12.27 per hundred thousand, I'm sorry. Sorry, per hundred thousand and $12.27 per hundred thousand for every, you know, all other homeowners, every homeowner basically in there. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's all public knowledge, we're not hyping anything here. This is a, it's a big case, you know, certainly for us and in the towns in that regard. Like I said, we've won every step of the way. You know, what's happened is it's, is a judge retired. And we were set to go to the next round and the judge retires, now they bring a new judge in, they start over. And of course pandemic delays things, you know, this, I think as well in that regard. So I just wanted to put that out there where, where we stand. And again, we would certainly rather have that money going somewhere else than in this regard.
Number three for me is the Board of Ed petition, petitions. If anyone is interested in running for the Board of Ed, they can contact Michelle, she can send out a packet. And those petitions are back with a minimum of 25 signatures by April 19th at 5:00 PM. The bond anticipation note financing, if you have the timeline with you. They'll start gathering information essentially from the, I don't know, about April 15th. And then the process will move forward from there. But you can expect to see some action on our board agendas to, to take care of that. You know, that bond anticipation note. The capital outlay project, there's, we are moving forward with the work on the Athens elevator. There's really two pieces of work. One is replacing some damaged parts or aged parts in the elevator. The other is the modernization. For the capital outlay, we're going to focus on the modernization piece. And then the repair is going to be taken care of out of the general fund. That way we can bring the project in under $100,000 and get the aid, 71% of that cost back in the next school year. And I think that's all I have. Any questions for me? Yes.
The almost $400,000 that we have sitting aside there. If we are to prevail in that, would that money have to then be spent out? You know, we can't continue to hold on to it.
Correct.
So we would have to then spend that out.
By, by law, if, if we were to prevail in this case, that money would have to be designated for some other purpose. It would not be able to stay in the tax certiorari reserve. That's against the law.
So you would have a building project or some, it would be a one-year loan, basically.
Yes, yes.
You, you could put it in other reserves.
Yes.
Yeah, so like, so if you want to transfer it to a capital reserve account or employee benefits reserve, you can do that. Or you can put it right in the general fund and, you know, and it becomes part of our, our overall budget. So there's, you know, different ways, we don't lose it, I guess.
A lot of money that we just have to sit on.
Yes.
Yeah.
Pay you back, because just with the 2021 budget, we've been, you know, I haven't done a lot with it because it's kind of hard to do it when you don't know what your revenue is going to be. We anticipate that in the next couple of weeks, even though we know there's a lot going on in Albany right now. But we just wanted to share with the board, probably some big five, these are kind of the, the big five parts of our budget overall. I think it makes up about 82% of our entire budget. And that's transportation, retirement contributions to the state retirement system, health insurance, salaries, which I think everybody understands that, and special ed costs in general. That's both in-house and specialized. So it's just, this is for your information, you can kind of see a five-year trend here. Leslie does it her accounting way and goes right to left. But anyway, so it's just for your information at this point to kind of give you that. And like I said, we anticipate the next meeting that there, we will be all budget, so to speak, you know, in getting there in that regard. There is certainly a lot of good news coming out of Washington. It's just a matter of the, the many filters through Albany that must travel before it gets to us. So that's where all, every, every school district in the state is waiting on. But it is certainly a lot better today than it was in the fall. And it certainly, you know, if you recall, and I think I mentioned this at one point, we were talking, they were talking a 20% across the board cut, you know, mid-year, which was just ungodly devastating for, for us and everybody else. So that's, that's off the table. But it's just a matter of how much of that aid it's earmarked for us through the, I don't know what they call it anymore, the CARES Act or, the, the most recent stimulus bill is already been factored into the budget or is it all new money? We're trying to figure that out, everybody's trying to figure that out, you know, with that. But it's definitely, we're in a lot better spot and districts all in the state are definitely than we were six months ago. Let's leave it at that. So, so we will be getting you information, you know, so we kind of have to put our pencils out and things like that. But I think we're hopefully a good spot.
Okay, thank you. Instructional services update.
It's good to follow the little budget report first because this is all contingent, obviously, on budget. But we're looking to try and go back to what we had for summer programming back in the 18, 19 school year and maybe even expand on it. So that would be going back to having the academic support classes that go from kindergarten up to eighth grade, where students are selected by the teachers who need just a little bit more of a push over the summer. They're hanging right in there on the cusp, but something to get them right to where they need to be for the next year. And then we also had some enrichment programs that we did in the 18, 19 school year. So we would look to try and do those again, the ones that we offered last time and possibly expand them. We did have a Links meeting today, so we did ask the Links team for any ideas about some interesting things that we could offer the kids, something that they would find exciting. And there were a lot of great suggestions on how to expand some things, maybe even offer some social, social emotional type of things over the summer as well as enrichment activities. We are hopeful that we will have the kids here in person. That's the plan right now. I don't see anything happening, but I always say hopeful because you never know. So we really think that that will be beneficial. And going back to, I know there's been some questions about the kids who are remote. One of the hopes is that that might possibly being that they're smaller groups, that maybe we could get some of our remote kids to kind of start transitioning back into coming back in person. Obviously dependent on the comfort level of their parents, but I know that's going to be a group that we're going to target. But we're very excited about bringing kids back on campus and having another robust summer of programming. And as before, we will have breakfast and lunch for free. So that's going to be another wonderful opportunity for the kids to get some food. And even if they don't come to our summer programs, they will obviously be able to access that as well.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Right, we have program matters, superintendent's recommendations for need of motion consent for A1 and 2 approving football and girls volleyball and the calendar. A motion.
A move.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Oppose, so Carrie. What's the now matters? So here's quite a few retirements to cover, but this would be a motion of consent to 4B1, 2A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and then three other appointments, substitutes and coaches and volunteers through page eight. And a motion of consent?
So a move.
Any discussion?
We have somebody, but that was brought to us late, as I said, we. late, as I said, we will wait to the next meeting to approve that person, so. Yeah, we, yeah, we plan on having a team, yes, yes. Okay, well, we'll talk about it, yes, okay. Just. Oh, I'm sorry. Um, and we'll, we'll, we'll bring them all in, but obviously, you know, I think, you know, we look here, some folks who won't be with us, you know, who are retiring there, so just to, you know, I think, shout out to everybody there. Oh, you can see their years of service, you know, um, a lot of years, uh, helping our kids and, and each other, uh, as we go through, so, uh, you know, Pauline Cole there, twenty-five years, and Dave Wagner, twenty-six, and Eric Schubert, Shob's twenty-six years, and, and Ms. Cappleston, thirty years, so she's not quite done yet. She'll be here till December. Um, and then Jen Lizette, you know, um, twenty-seven years, uh, and Darlene, twenty-three, and a lot of people remember Darlene as a librarian for a while down E J R there, right? Yep, and she's making it happen up here in the middle school. Abby Breen, our, our nurse and former board member, by the way, fifteen years, and then Mr. Propper, right, who's been with us for twenty-three, and some different roles there, so. Again, I'm not gonna spend a lot to right now. Uh, we'll give them their due here later on in the school year, but just again, a very sincere thank you, uh, on behalf of everybody in, in the communities. Congratulations to that.
Second, that, they count a hundred and ninety-five years.
Okay, right. It was too much math for me. I'm a self-studies guy, so I, yeah, it's three digits, I'm done. That's a date.
We'll have the chance, I guess, to speak to individuals and do.
Yes, we will have them here, when I say here, to a board meeting, or some, or some kind of event, because it's, yeah, them and the teachers, which we approved, a lot of them last month.
Yeah, right.
When does softball start then? Does it start before our, our next meeting?
I'm gonna say probably.
Well, I just, because, like Jamie just asked about the junior varsity person, if we don't, if we wait.
We'll make, we'll fix, yeah, we'll figure it out.
I just want to make sure.
No, we know, yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion of consent for C one, two, three, four, five. Separate them, okay, so C one, two, four, five? Need a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. All taken, sent, or three, C three? Okay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I am standing.
So carried. Okay, assuming we don't have public input a second time, so round the table for recognition. Nicole?
Um, I, I wanted to say, uh, thank you to the kids that presented today. I thought they did a great job, um, and all of the staff that's involved in that. Um, I love the idea of the fundraiser, and I also loved all the things that they've been doing despite the pandemic. I think it's great, well, thanks, it's awesome. And, um, this has been a really tough month personally as a teacher, just because March is just tricky. It's the end of the summer, or it's the end of the winter, and it's just a lot of pressure on everybody that works in the school, kids, staff, whatever your role is here, I appreciate you, we appreciate you, so thanks, and keep on going, we're almost there.
Katie?
My monthly thank you to the parents. Um, I think we're doing a great job here. Our staff is incredible. I say that every month, and I truly, truly mean it. I too am in education, and I too agree with, um, Nicole. We did not, where I work, we did not get our February break, so it's been a long haul. So, thank you to our community.
Just want to recognize, uh, our sports coaches for doing an incredible job getting our kids together and practicing, uh, for the sports seasons that they've been offered this year. And special recognition to all our, uh, our parents, all our sports athletes who are behind the scenes, volunteering for sports dinners, and, uh, helping the coaches, putting things together, so, uh, I want to thank them all.
Carrie?
Um, I just want to say thank you to everyone who's taken the time to either fill out the survey, to speak at a forum, or to write a letter to Michelle to share to us for the district clerk. Um, we appreciate all of your feedback, and we are working through reading it all, so I just want to say thank you for you guys putting in the time to share your thoughts with us.
David?
Uh, I just kind of wanted to echo what Nicole said, and, and, you know, say thank you to the, the National Journal Society students, you know, to be so, um, well-spoken, to put together a presentation, and not only to put together a presentation, but then to be able to deliver it virtually, which is something that, you know, as we've seen adults struggle with. So it's just, again, proof that, that our kids are persevering through this, and, uh, I think we all come out better in the end.
Lori?
Um, I know that the faculty isn't retiring yet, but I just wanted to say thanks for hanging in for this long, and, um, and good luck in your future. And it was probably, I don't know if it was an easy decision or a hard decision, but thank you for your time here, and, you know, making, help making our community really, really nice.
Diana?
Yeah, I'll, you know, it's, it's hard to be last, because I'm gonna say everything that everybody else said, but I'm so happy, um, it was such a big decision to open up, um, high-risk sports, and I'm so happy with how successful we've been, and we've been able to get the kids out there and get them moving and get them together and sweating and doing it safely. Um, and we're going to have a, a school performance, and I, I just appreciate all the work that has gone into making this happen in an unconventional way, so, it's great.
Thank you. Well, I actually just want to thank you, the board, uh, being, uh, president, sometimes is a bit of a lightning rod for some things, but I have and I, I really appreciate the support, and when I reach out to in, you as individuals, or together, you're always there with, uh, great ideas, and, uh, you know, we, we're gonna keep going, and I think we, we really, uh, I really do enjoy the team that we've become. And I think, uh, you know, we, we work things through, and we come to help, I think, the administration and the teachers and everyone do what it is that we hope they can do with our kids, and help them be successful, and help their families, uh, appreciate all the things people do, but thank you all for that. On that note, then we have future meetings, it'll be April fifteenth. For a presentation meeting here, six o'clock, April. I'm assuming we're not, we're, we'll be doing the same thing here, virtually, I mean, virtually, or whatever, yeah. And with the E J A library, would we go there? Yeah, okay, so we'll be okay, and then, uh, April twentieth, for the board meeting.
That's a Tuesday.
Okay.
That's, that's the annual voting, voting vote.
Okay. And then May twentieth for a board meeting. And when is the vote? The vote, the May eighteenth? Okay, so I just need a, uh, motion to go into executive session. We have to approve some minutes, and we have a request for executive session, I guess, for some personnel issue, and, uh, just need a motion for that.
I'll move.
Favor? Opposed, so carried. So this will end this portion of our meeting. Thank you.